Donahue.
Here.
Donahue, here. Holly. Holly, absent. Fernwald.
Here.
Fernwald, here. Hill.
Here.
Hill, here. Mack. Mack, absent. Carr.
Here.
Carr, here. Cantellos Omen.
Here.
Cantellos Omen, here. Slattery. Slattery, absent. Clinker.
Here.
Clinker, here. Johnson.
Here.
Johnson, here. Alexander.
Here.
Alexander, here. Bellato.
Here.
Bellato, here. Cazadas.
Here.
Cazadas, here. Rita.
Here.
Rita, here. Eleven present. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantellos Omen.
Aye.
Cantellos Omen, aye. Clinker. Clinker, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Cazadas.
Aye.
Cazadas, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Eleven ayes, Your Honor.
Good evening. My name is Rosemary Murphy. I own the property at 13042 Western Three Sisters Antique Mall. I just wanted to make a comment. I think, as Alderman, you should very carefully weigh your expenditures. I drove around this evening and it looked like, as I mentioned to someone, that a nuclear bomb hit Blue Island and left everything intact, but all the people are gone. What I mean by that is how many storefronts, the hospital, things like that, that are empty, but they have their furniture and their equipment and everything in there. I would suggest, instead of wasteful spending for hiring people to do something that is pretty much could be taught to someone on your staff already in terms of your newsletters, your website, money that's spent for additional counsel, should be spent to hire an economic development director who could market Blue Island to both new residents and new businesses. You're not giving us a lot of hope out there, those of us who do have businesses. It's taking a lot to think of, why would we stay in Blue Island? You don't work with each other. You fight each other. Your biggest thing is to get who you want into office and then you get all your buddies hired. It has to stop. People are tired of it. And you're going to start losing some very good businesses if you don't stop. Because we're coming to a point where we just don't care anymore. We're burnt out, too. We're tired of your fighting. Act up like, act like grownups and start working together. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ron Bloom. I've been a proud resident of Blue Island for over thirty years and I live at 2421 Walnut. As always, I want to recognize the commitment that you've made to our community in serving in the capacities that you do. That's very important because these are trying times indeed. You know, and, and in many respects, it is much more challenging to run a small city than it is a large city. You know, for many, many different reasons. So that makes, you know, all of our jobs, you know, harder. You know, and we count on the resiliency of our community to come together, to work together. It's important that you, as sitting city council members, do the same. As Rosemary said, put aside the petty politic antics to position your people. Focus on why you're here, and that's to serve this community. That's to rebuild this community. These are very, very challenging times indeed, and it's going to take a collective effort to get through them. And we stand ready to help support that. But you have to be the guiding light, working together to help us, to get our state representatives to really help us, to get our Congress to help us if need be, because we're in this together. You know, as Rosemary said, you know, it's looking pretty bleak out there. You know, we're doing our best to keep our properties up, we're doing our best to encourage people to come to Blue Island, but I think it's a very good question. How do we market Blue Island at a business level, at a residential level? This is an incredible community with an incredible fabric and a long, long history of families that made lots of sacrifices so that we could be here today. And there's still so much potential in this community. So I, too, would like to urge you to come together, work together, and let's figure this out. And if you're not willing to do that, then step down from office and let people in office that are going to do the job. Shifting gears a little bit, you know, one of the other things, you know, that many of us have commented on is Western Avenue, right? And the fact that even though there's a speed limit, you know, there is a public safety issue because it's largely ignored. You know, maybe there's a way that we can market that and have drag strips on certain nights because people aren't coming to town for business. But beyond that, there's another public safety issue, and Candace is well aware of this because she helped to, helped to address it many years ago. You know, we live off of an alley, all right, just west of Western Avenue. And that alley, it's not an alley, it's a bypass to Western Avenue. I can't tell you how many cars routinely come going north and south to bypass Western and to bypass Gregory. And it's not just that they use the alley, but they come down at streets that even exceed what's on Western Avenue. We were able, through Candace's help, to get a stop sign put in that nobody pays attention to. The only thing that some people have paid attention to is a white stripe that we painted by the stop sign. This is a public safety issue because this is a walking community. We have an apartment complex just west of where we live. Kids on their bikes use the community. People walking their dogs use that alley. You know, and then there's certain individuals, every morning, if the police chief were here, I'll, you know, I'll make a, make a comment, you know, on their way to work, roaring down the alley at a quarter to seven, blaring their horn. So I'm sure we're not alone there. Anyone that has an alley that is near Western Avenue probably goes through the same thing. Lastly, I would just like to encourage you again, you know, those of us that can't always be at these meetings, you know, the audio is not really good when you try to listen to them on Channel Four. Please, speak into the mics, speak up when you talk so that we don't miss one scintilla of the important information that you share. Again, I really want to say thank you for being here, thank you for listening, and we stand ready to help support to move Blue Island forward. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carol DePace Green. Absolutely, thank you all for being here. I want to first thank any of the Aldermen who were at Metro South Friday night. Alderman Annette Alexander, I saw you. I also saw you, Alderman Johnny Hill. If there's anyone that I missed that was there, Bill Fernwald, I saw you there. Mayor Vargas, I also saw you there. State Representative Bob Rita was also there, and I don't see him, but Bob Jackson was, was with him as well. And so thank you for coming immediately and the response to what really is a devastating situation for Blue Island with the certainly calculated move that Metro South made. I did prepare a statement. Our Blue Island Aldermen and elected officials are our biggest resource. We need you. We need you to be focused. We need you to address the issues that are going on. Our biggest Blue Island danger is the tremendous amount of misinformation. We need our city to be in good, capable hands and headed in the right direction. At this time, Blue Island taxpayers don't have solid evidence of that. To be clearer, no TIF money should be going to Metro South Quorum. Metro South Quorum has both a legal and moral obligation to have an appropriate exit plan. There's no evidence of that. Blue Island Police Department, Blue Island Fire Department, Blue Island City Hall, first responders, communities from 87th Street in Chicago to the South Suburbs were not prepared for Quorum's actions on Friday, September 20th. No question, people are going to die. No doubt, first responders, first responders are implementing Plan B, worst-case scenario. Costs associated with ALS upgrade training, that is an investment in Blue Island, when we need it most, should most definitely be a shared cost. The City of Blue Island should expect, anticipate, and be prepared for more lawsuits. St. James Hospital, Chicago Heights has been demolished, devastating Chicago Heights and other poor community, and Mattson has never recovered from the closing of the Lincoln Mall. Public Health and Safety Committee has not met regularly. Chair Alicia Slattery should be allowed all the time off that she needs. However, the committee should be meeting regularly. An interim, second, or new chair may need to be selected from the committee members who are not currently chairing a committee. They are, of course, Alicia Slattery, Chair, Candace Carr, Chairman of Municipal Services, William Caesar, Bill Fernwald, Johnny Hill, Dexter Johnson, and Jim Clinker. Talk with the mayor, talk amongst yourselves, figure it out. We need to be, to continue to move forward. All lake water removed from Lake Michigan is accounted for. The Village of Posen's water is accounted for through Harvey. Posen has a contract with Harvey. Posen's water loss is greater than Blue Island's. A connection for water to and from Posen is in California Gardens, where there is no water tower. Chlorine has to be regularly pushed through to keep the water safe and healthy in California Gardens. Blue Island does not have updated authority to sell water to anyone. There is no ordinance granting permission for Blue Island to sell water to anyone except Blue Island water consumers. There is no ordinance granting Blue Island the authority to sell water to Posen. At the Finance Committee meeting, it was revealed that the Finance Committee water, favored water sold to Posen at the rate of $5 per thousand gallons, which will generate no profit for the City of Blue Island. No Alderman on the Finance Committee, Donahue, Clinker, Alexander, Johnson, or Bellato, oppose the reduced cost at the $5 rate that Posen would be charged for water. That's less than what we're paying for water to just get it. It must be noted, Blue Island water consumers are charged $8,043 for 1,000 gallons of water and $1.69 for sewer service per 1,000 gallons of water consumed, for a total of $10.12. Blue Island needs money. So why do Alderman, Donahue, Clinker, Alexander, Johnson, Bellato, and Finance Director Mike Marzell, City Treasurer Carmen Bellato, support charging Posen less than 50% of what Blue Island water consumers are charged? Why would they support selling water to Posen at a cost at or below Blue Island's The City of Blue Island is currently in no position to sell recreational marijuana. Our Blue Island Fire Department is not ALS certified. Zoning is not in place for recreational marijuana. Licensing is not in place for the operation or sale of recreational marijuana, and no Blue Island public hearings regarding the sale of recreational marijuana have ever taken place, occurred, or even been scheduled. And lastly, an investigation into the Tahos and G-Pass is nothing more than a giant waste of precious Blue Island City Council time and Blue Island City Council limited funds because Mr. Sergio Acosta has no subpoena power, can't put anyone under oath, won't get any help from the Cook County State's Attorney's Office, because the State's Attorney's Office won't get involved with the Tahos. We know the Tahoe investigation, a Tahoe investigation, was completed at no cost to the Blue Island taxpayers. Both vehicles are titled to a non-entity, City of Blue Island Agency, BIIL.gov. The actual G-Pass agreement written by City Attorney Shontay Rains is different from what was approved by the Blue Island City Council and granted Augustino Corkus too much leeway and access to confidential information. We know there was no G-Pass follow-up or follow-up reports from any Blue Island committees, the Blue Island Clerk's Office, the Blue Island City Treasurer, or the Blue Island Mayor. Why was the actual G-Pass agreement written by City Attorney Shontay Rains different from what was approved by the City Council? Why does the G-Pass agreement grant Corkus so much leeway and access to confidential information? Why was there no follow-up and no follow-up reports from any of the committees, the Clerk's Office, the Treasurers, or the Mayor? As of today, the Tahoe's remaining containers at Airline at no cost, with the keys for both vehicles secured, in the City of Blue Island Clerk Randy Hoiser's office. The FBI Secretary of State's office, South Suburban Major Crimes Task Force are investigating. Each work at their own pace. The FBI Secretary of State's office and SSMCTF won't be rushed. There is no option except to wait for each of the FBI Secretary of State's office and SSMCTF reports and for them to act. As you know, we are collectively waiting for the FBI Secretary of State's office, SSMCTF, to act and report. We all want and deserve answers on the issues of Mr. Corkus and the Tahos. And no doubt, $15,000 can better be spent on ALS training for our Blue Island Fire Department or the long overdue City of Blue Island forensic audit. Thank you.
Hi, yeah, I'm Effren Ortiz. I live on the corner of Broadway and Rexford. I pretty much just came here to ask the city's opinion on exactly what she said, recreational marijuana, and what your opinions all are. There's a huge opportunity, in my opinion, with a lot of vacancies and it's different commercial properties all throughout Blue Island. I know a handful of companies specifically that I know can easily buy a lot of these properties and do business there, so that's pretty much what I'm here for. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor.
City Council.
Alan Stevo. Ms. Green's a tough act to follow. Item nine on tonight's agenda regarding Metro South Hospital. Mayor, with all due respect, we're asking you to please discuss this in open session so the residents will know what's going on, with all due respect. And Alderman, we're asking you the same thing. Discuss this very important matter in executive session, not behind the closed door. Metro South, they didn't act in good faith. They could have told us a year ago they were going to close so the fire department could at least get EMTs in place to serve the residents. Instead of marijuana dispensaries, instead of more casinos, the state legislatures in Springfield failed us. They failed us miserably. They should have secured legislation that would have prevented Metro South and other hospitals in closing. A lot of discussion on the street also about the Robbie Silva case, plus the soul. Why do the taxpayers have to pay this million-dollar judgment? Why should we pay it? Let's go after those people who are responsible. Make them pay it, not us, not the hard-working people of Blue Island. Let those who are responsible for paying it. People like, listen in the paper, perhaps Mike Cronell, former police chief Phil Contreras, Ed Burns. Obstruction of justice. Justice is not being served. What did Mayor Don Paloka know about this? What did City Clerk Pam Frazier know about this? They were all hands-on. What do they know about it? What did they do to prevent it? This million-dollar lawsuit was not necessary. If they would have acted in good faith, they could have prevented it.
Anyone else? Now to move on to the mayor's business, mayor's announcements. Again, I'm going to read the following statement prepared after I testified and a lot of residents and professionals testified at the board a week ago Wednesday. Again, the city's first priority, and I repeat, the city's priority has been to ensure that the people of Blue Island have access and continue to have access to health care, and our emergency responders have a quality facility to provide those needs with critical services. Quorum's/Metro South's announcement caught all of us by surprise. The league team that was established as the date of the hearing drew near, knowing that under the rules unless a new operator was identified, the hospital would close, the city began to engage in discussions at the 11th hour with Metro South and Quorum to try to provide a path forward to bringing healthcare services to Blue Island when Quorum leaves. Again, the filing of a lawsuit by people's choice caught everyone by surprise that morning. The board has provided a month-long deferral, which gives the parties an opportunity, and I repeat, an opportunity to continue to work in good faith to find a new health care provider for Blue Island. And we, as an administration, support it wholeheartedly. We will work not only with the staff, we will work with the unions, we will work with anyone who's associated with that institution. The people of Blue Island and the surrounding communities deserve, and I repeat, deserve quality, accessible health care. We are willing to meet with any health care providers who want to establish meaningful services in our city and our community and invest their time and resources in our community. In addition to striving to keep healthcare services in the heart of Blue Island, the city sought to protect Blue Island taxpayers by recovering money that had benefited Quorum in redevelopment funds and recent property taxes. The city also sought to identify terms with Quorum whereby they would eventually give control, the city control, over the use of the sprawling hospital campus, which includes the hospital itself and several ancillary buildings and parking lots. The city also took steps in the 11th hour to protect the severance payments of the hospital workers, many of whom are Blue Island residents and who are prepared to continue serving the residents of this community. Our goal, and again, our goal, was to make the best of that situation that was not of our creation and not within our control. As a result of the board's decision, Blue Island has another chance to find a provider willing and able to give our residents the quality health care options they deserve. We pledge to continue working with Quorum to ease the transition from Metro South to a new provider, protect the investment of Blue Island taxpayers, and create a plan for future use and development of the land in the hospital district. And again, as Mayor, my commitment, this administration, is to continue working together with everyone, from the state, local, all the way to Washington, D.C., from your residents to health providers, to the union. As has been stated by you as the residents, we have to work as one. This isn't just the city doing it or the state representative doing it. This is all of us working together for one community. If we really love our community, we stick together and we do it for the betterment of everyone. Again, this is a life and death, as I stated before in the interview before Channel Nine, this is a life and death situation. On a personal note, I got stung by a bee on Saturday. I've never been stung by a bee in my 57 years that I've been alive. So I didn't know whether I was going to get an allergic reaction or not. And I did get a little bit of one. Me, as the mayor, not having access to Metro South or any healthcare facility would have been devastating, not only to my family, but the consequence, ancillary consequences that could have happened. So then, then you start realizing, but we've realized this since day one, we need, at a minimum, at a minimum, an ER room in this facility, and we must stress to our legislative people in Springfield, to pass legislation that's coming up, and this session is coming up, for at least a freestanding ER room. And we have to be innovative as a community, whether we set up a committee, working with the city and all the people together, to see who is the best provider of services in this community. From my understanding, talks are still going on. City Clerk, any business?
Yes, I have one item to read this evening, Your Honor. I have a motion to approve a block party on 119th Place from Longwood Drive to Washington Street on Saturday, September 28, 2019, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantellos Omen.
Aye.
Cantellos Omen, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Cazadas.
Aye.
Cazadas, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Twelve ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
No, no sir, no bids.
Everyone should have received their transfer of restricted and unrestricted funds in a total of $365,143.17, and I wanted to be able to explain the parking lot tickets of the transfer of $200,000 that came to pay, accounts payable, and automatically goes into their. Any questions? I don't think you have a motion.
Just about the parking ticket, so it's going into accounts payable just to pay general expenses?
It's a general fund. It's a separate line item that should have never been separated. It all goes into the general fund anyway. It's like the water. The water is restricted, but if we want to take money from the water department to the corporate, we have to come to corporate authority to have the transfer authorized, but not in this situation. This is normally, normally going.
Any other questions? Oliver Donahue, second. Holly, any questions?
Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantellos Omen.
Aye.
Cantellos Omen, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Johnson.
Nope.
Johnson, no. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Cazadas.
Aye.
Cazadas, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Eleven ayes and one no, Your Honor.
To inform the council, and I'm asking for, and my proper verbiage may not be correct here, but I need to have a meeting with the mayor, Mr. Hauser, Mr. Horvath, our attorney, and Ms. Burke, if necessary, in an administrative meeting to discuss financial things, situations for the city that are pertinent, and I don't want to use the word crisis, but there's important decisions that need to be made. And somebody who brought some of these issues up, the hospital, as the mayor said, there's other issues that need to be brought up and discussed, and we get to go forward with discussion from the administration.
We'll try to set something up with them, at least, by next week.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Before we go into city attorney's business, Eric, Mr. Albers, I'm going to catch you on the spot. We've got some good news about the Western Avenue Bridge. You want to come to the podium, and since this is an opportunity for you to inform the city councils to what's happening with the Western Avenue Bridge.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So on Friday, September 24...
So on Friday, September 24th, last Friday, there was a, there was a letting, a state letting for the Western Avenue Bridge replacement, which is the south approach to the Cal-Sag Canal. And so that project was let and will be awarded in the next 45 days with construction to be starting in the spring. It's about a $10 million project. It's sorely needed, as I'm sure everybody knows, in Blue Island, and it will last about two years. IDOT will be replacing the south approach to the Western Avenue Bridge over the canal.
Very good. Congratulations to everyone.
Thank you.
It's much needed reconstruction of that bridge, but they're not going to close the entire bridge, so you know. It's only one link from my understanding.
Right, that's right. So the Western Avenue will remain open to traffic the entire duration of project construction.
Unfortunately, for we know, it cannot be, it could be painted blue, but that's on us as a city to paint it blue, and it's costing too much money. So just to know, we have the other bridges, the Demetria Street, the Channel Bridge, just to paint it blue is $1.5 million. City attorney, any business?
No business.
Community development committee.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start off with the minutes. Community development committee met on September 11th, 2019, at 7:00 PM with Alderman Bellato, Cantellos, Metcalf, Zara's, Alexander, and Holly present. Building Department was also present. We had public comment. Dave Helsley, a resident, had an opinion on the cannabis agenda item, but was satisfied with the discussion the committee had and withdrew his comment, or planning the comment. Under new business, there was a motion by Alderman Kuzara, second by Alderman Meck, to approve partnering with the Chicago Bungalow Association to offer a no-cost energy grant to qualifying residents within the city of Blue Island. It was approved. All ayes, motion carried. Chairman Bellato will request a sample resolution to forward to our attorney to review before signing at the city council. I haven't gotten a sample yet. I reached out to them, and they should be getting it in the next few days. I'll send it to Attorney Horvath. And basically, it's for, I think, below 60,000 or 70,000 family income, they'll come in and re-insulate your attic for free. And the city just has to pass a resolution authorizing them to do the program in the city. They would still have to get permits and go through the whole building process, but we would have to prove it at the city and to offer it to our residents. It's being successfully done in Oak Forest, Tinley, Orland, Posen, a bunch of towns around here, and we'd like to offer it here to Blue Island residents, too. There was a motion by Alderman Kuzara, second by Alderman Meck, to opt-in, allowing cannabis sales within city limits. All ayes, motion carried. There was much discussion on the subject, but opinions from the city attorney, city attorneys, Howard Kapari, Brian Poulos, and most of the committee. The committee agreed to start with an opt-in motion at city council. If that is favorable, then to begin the crafting of a zoning ordinance with restrictions and controls, which would include public hearings. This is just so we don't waste time crafting all these ordinances if the Aldermen don't want it to begin with, so. The committee agreed that there will most likely be a large incentive of revenue for the city if we did put it in place, which then can be used for projects in dire need of funding such as the streets. Kevin Brown gave the marketing report. There was questions regarding the city website, especially committee dates and times being accurate. Kevin will investigate rectifying cooperation with the city clerk. There's a brief ongoing discussion with city light pole replacement, which is ongoing. There's a brief ongoing discussion with the process of building permits and displaying them in windows, which is ongoing. Mark Miller gave a report on special projects, the Bios Farm. A letter will be drafted to explain the process of going forward, including the issue of the temporary sheds on the property. The committee again reiterated its desire to expedite the process of allowing them to remain on the land they currently use. Since the community development meeting, I have met with Mark Miller and Larry from Bios Farm at the site, and we are progressing forward with keeping them at that site, hopefully for no cost, but there might be some costs associated with getting land appraised. If you've been coming to my meetings, it's a long technical road dealing with MWRD, but the goal of the city is to keep the farm in its current location where it's at, and we're moving forward with that. And the farmer, Larry and Joe, seem to be satisfied with the way we're moving forward, and they're also lobbying themselves with MWRD to make this happen before springtime planning. Soccer field discussion with Mark Miller under special project, we're still ongoing. It's kind of tied to the MWRD Bios Farm situation, because it's on MWRD property, so that's kind of tied to whatever happens with Bios Farm. We talked about the enterprise zone, really doesn't really affect us, the Cal-Sag Enterprise Zone Amendment, that's on the agenda tonight. It's every council, every member in the enterprise zone has to approve any change, and I believe the change is in Homewood, and so every town would have to change increasing the enterprise zone to a section in Homewood, I think. But that's going to be on the agenda tonight. We just have to approve it that they're making a change in their town. The Cal-Sag Trail, Mark gave an update on the letting of bids for the Blue Island West portion, hopefully starting in early spring, and the maintenance of the trail after that. There's a motion by Alderman Holly, second by Alderman Bellato, to approve an RFP, request for proposal for parking lot and focal point improvements and maintenance of 12 locations. All ayes, motion carried. This has been in the committee for several meetings. This to maintain all city parking lots along Western Avenue, along focal points along Western Avenue in the Business District, like the flagpole triangle, the area in front of Dunkin' Donuts, and a handful of other ones, under a maintenance agreement. And we decided to go the cost savings route of putting it out there. It's going to be out there after it's approved tonight, that landscape firms that are bonded and licensed in the city can submit how they think they can improve that area and ongoing maintenance cost of improving that area. And the committee then would review and see if any options are good to go with, or we can make changes to it. And if that doesn't seem to go right, then the more expensive option would be having a landscape architect, which we would have to hire, and design every single location individually, which would cost a lot of upfront money for the city. So we decided to do the RFP, basically saying, this is the areas we want you to submit stuff to us, submit what you want to do there, and submit costs associated with it. So that's on the agenda for tonight. Brian Poulos gave a report on the Fire Museum project. They met, they're in continuous discussion. The Fire Museum, which is in cooperation with the Blue Island Historical Society, has to still get engineering done, surveys done. It's still a long way off before breaking ground. September 28, 2019, at 9:00 AM was set for the committee's next walk and talk with businesses. The last time we had one, we did the east section of Western Avenue from 119th roughly to, I don't know.
Collins.
Collins, yeah. Clerk Hauser was, joined us at that committee, that walk and talk meeting. I believe we had five applications come through from that walk and talk, basically just informing the business owners that there's money available through the Business District grant that no one's applying for, and you guys should apply for this, and it covers pretty much any exterior improvements. The city has recently increased it to 75% cost, so it's a good time to take advantage of this, and it's more of just outreach. So we have next one scheduled for September 28th, which is this Saturday, 9:00 AM. We're going to start at McDonald's at 119th Street and go for a few hours from there. If anybody likes to join us, it's a public meeting. Chairman Bellato and Alderman Holly visited Liberty Flag and Banner, the Blue Island Company that installs our annual holiday decorations. We ordered decorations based on input from the committee to decorate every pole from 119th Street all the way down to Old Western Avenue. We are also getting estimates on purchasing our own versus continuously leasing the same ones over and over again. So we're still waiting for our cost estimates. We were warned recently in an email that it's kind of too close to Christmas season to order our own, but we are still steadfastly going to decorate every single pole, and the cost is minimal to just do it, to do every pole between 119th Street to Old Western. And in public works, repairing, I think it's 11 poles, the outlets have broken over the years, so it's small repairs like that, just so that all the lights look the same and all work the same. If anybody pays attention to that, or is OCD like me, that kind of bothers me when I have two or three decorations that are broken on one side of the street. So that's being worked on right now. So hopefully we have new lights. If not, every light at least have decorations on it that work. We talked about the Census 2020, along with Marisol from the mayor's office. Since the meeting, the city has sent a letter to the Census 2020 for our cooperation for a complete count. The next order of business is to set up a complete count committee of residents, business owners, and community leaders. Chairman Bellato mentioned possibly seven to nine people on the committee, predominantly minority representatives, that no many people would serve the city best in our efforts to get an accurate count. To many benefits from this, as I stated before, federal-state funding, economic development was brought up. The committee agreed that we would get estimates to replace the banners along Western Avenue for next year with ones that somehow market also the Census 2020. The complete count committee would have to coordinate with the city council and the mayor's office to work on exposure and areas that need door-to-door reminders. Chairman Bellato requested names to be sent to him and Marisol for appointment to the committee. We will discuss it at our next community development meeting, and hopefully we got at least seven or nine people to get going on a complete count committee. Brian Poulos and Howard Kapari gave a billing report. Chairman Bellato brought up the need to extend and create a new TIF that touches four, five, and six, so that the additional streets can be done. This is an ongoing discussion for many years. Most of the people on the council have been here with her for many years, and we've talked about this. We just need to get it done. And the benefits of that is once they start touching, you can transfer money from one to the other, and if you touch the TIF into some residential streets, you can start doing those streets, especially in the northeast section of town with the flooding issues and how terrible the streets are up there. So we'd like to extend the TIF into that area, so at least it touches some streets up there. Chairman Bellato brought up requesting a draft nuisance property ordinance be brought to the committee. The law was changed in 2015 that grants additional power to non-home rural municipalities, such as ourselves, that would be able to put more teeth into our building codes and go after nuisance properties. So that'll be in discussion for as long as it needs to be in my committee, starting at our next meeting. So there being no additional business, we ended the meeting at 45:00 PM, and it's one of our shorter ones, only lasting almost three hours. That was September 11th. Our next meeting is going to be, what is it offhand now? It's the second Wednesday. I should have put it at the bottom here. Is it the 9th?
October 9th.
9th. 9th at 7:00 PM here. If you'd like to join us for three hours of good talk. So, that being said, I also met with a few people that are interested in bringing businesses to town. Alderman Holly was involved in a few of those conversations also. It's ongoing. We did, while we're doing the walk and talk, we counted vacant storefronts, and to estimate, between 119th Street and Old Western Avenue, there's 365 storefronts of various sizes, and roughly 10 for sure that are vacant out of 364. There's a lot of them, as Rosemary Murphy mentioned, that look like they're empty, but when we've been asking, can we rent the spot, they're saying it is rented. For example, there are a few antique stores in town that have not been open in years, and I contacted the owner, for example, the one by the Veterans Triangle, and he says they rent, they rent and they pay rent every month. So we're running into a lot of that, and it surprised me when I found that out. There's places in the old Amets Building that are painted over, the windows are white, there's a tech company inside there. So it's surprising how many spots are actually being used more for storage and not for walk-in access. So this is something the city needs to start talking about, how we can look into this kind of thing. But roughly 10 for sure for lease out of 364, because I'm looking for some spots for some businesses that have called us up, and Jebbins Hardware, Klein's, for example, Klein's, anybody knows who that is, you know, Vermont and Western, is rented technically. So that's not up for rent. It's been rented for a few years, but she's still going through the process of opening up her business. So that was off the list, but I put it on the list anyway, you know, so it's one of my 10. But a lot of the businesses we have that are empty are very apparent, like the old Walgreens. It's very obvious, Klein's, it's very obvious. But there's a lot of businesses, and I think, me and Clerk Hauser mentioned this when we were doing that walk up there, there's a lot of service businesses, not really walk-in buying something businesses, it's services. Lot of insurance agencies, a lot of currency exchanges. That strip mall, Randy, was it three currency exchanges?
Yeah, there was a couple.
Three currency exchanges, 123rd and Western. I didn't think there was even any of them in there. So anyways, I'm going off track here. Going back to the city council agenda. Number one, ordinance number 2019-44 is an ordinance for the amendment to the current existing Cal-Sag Enterprise Zone, subject to the Enterprise Zone Act of the state of Illinois, and this is what I was mentioning with Homuds adding more pins, it was in the council packet. We just have to approve it because we're part of the Cal-Sag Enterprise Zone, so I need a motion for that.
Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantelloselman.
Aye.
Cantelloselman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Cosidas.
Aye.
Cosidas, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Twelve ayes, Your Honor.
Next, I have a proposal for cleaning, replanting, watering, and maintaining existing landscape areas for the city of Blue Island, Illinois. This is the RFP I mentioned, 12 locations, all the parking lots on Western Avenue in the Business District, and also some public scene areas like the flagpoles. So I need a motion to put this out for an RFP.
Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantelloselman.
Aye.
Cantelloselman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Cosidas.
Aye.
Cosidas, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Twelve ayes, Your Honor.
All right, next I have mixed-use development shared parking study for the city of Blue Island. This passed out of my committee a while back. It's concerning a part of our zoning right now as it exists is that you need to have so many parking spaces for an eligible business, and this came to light with the banquet hall that's proposing to open in the old Klein's location. So the zoning board of appeals requested a parking study to be done that the city, because we're requesting it, is going to pay for, but we expanded it, and it's going to be the entire area from like New Street to, from New Street to Grove, I think, that whole area around there, so we can use the same document over and over again for any business that applies in that vicinity. It's gone through finance, it's gone through community developments, just has to go through council. So I need a motion.
Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye.
whole area around there, so we can use the same document over and over again for any business that applies in that vicinity. It's gone through finance, it's gone through community developments, it just has to go through council. So I need a motion.
You have a second, Alderman Kozidis. Any questions?
Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zelman.
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Kozidis. Kozidis, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. 12 ayes, Your Honor.
Last motion I need is the initiate, this is like a straw poll, but at an official level. Motion to initiate an amendment to the city zoning code to allow for the operation and regulation of cannabis business establishment within the city municipal boundaries. If you notice, I said motion to initiate the process. So this is just the beginning of the process. It's going to be probably a long process. So I need a motion to just initiate that process.
You have a motion, you have a second, Alvin Donahue. Any questions?
More of a comment. I just wanted to speak in favor of this. It's not because I'm dying to buy marijuana, because I hate to break it, everyone here, marijuana is already very readily available in our community. And the product, the product isn't safe, it's not regulated, bad people are selling it. The state of Illinois gave us a tool that's going to change that. It's not going to change overnight, but they gave us a tool that a community or businesses are going to be able to sell it. We might have a business that wants to grow it here in town, we could have businesses that could transport it to other parts of the state. So it's bigger than just recreational marijuana being able to be sold in Blue Island, there's other facets to this. And the marijuana, it's controlled, it's inspected by the government, it's not sold by, by the guy in the dark alley around the corner. So I just wanted everyone to take that in mind, that marijuana, again, I hate to break it to people, it's here, it's not going away, but now we have a tool that's going to take the bad people out of it, and we have an opportunity to make some revenue off of it. So just wanted to speak in favor and let, let everyone know that it's bigger than just selling it, there's grow facilities, there's transportation facilities that could benefit from this. So, thank you, Your Honor.
You have a motion, you have a second, any other comments?
Just a quick question, so I'm sure on this, if I agree to do this tonight, we're just going to start the ball rolling?
Yeah, there's not even an ordinance or resolution attached to this.
Looking at zoning licensing hearing, all that other kind of stuff.
We don't actually have to, as the attorneys will tell you, we don't have to actually do this at all, I just felt it was a good step forward to see where we're at before we go any further. So, you can opt out, but you don't have to opt in, you go through the process. So this is just me doing an extra step.
Any other questions?
Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zelman.
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Kozidis. Kozidis, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. 12 ayes, Your Honor.
Last thing is just what I mentioned already in my minutes, we're going to have that walk and talk starting on Saturday, September 28th, at 9:00 a.m. at McDonald's at 119th Street. We'll stay there for about 10 minutes or so, talk to the manager there, and take a little walk. Last one only lasted two to three hours, and I'd say about the, about the same time. So, thank you, that's all I got.
Thank you, Your Honor. Finance Committee met last night, I have not had a chance to put together my minutes, but I do have a couple motions I'd like to bring forward. First is a motion for approval of the accounts payable check proof for September 25th, 2019. So there was a discrepancy with the amount that was provided to the Finance Committee yesterday and the amount in the city council packet. So what the Finance Committee did was, we approved the, the contract, the contractual services, which is mostly, which makes up most of the accounts payable, so what the Finance Committee approved last night was an amount of $268,535.29. And again, there's, there's a discrepancy in the two, the two documents, and we couldn't get explanation on, on the discrepancy and what the differences were, so. So my motion would be to approve the accounts payable for the contract services for $268,535.29.
You have a motion, you have a second, Alvin. Any questions? Throw a call, please.
Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zelman.
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Clinker.
Clinker, aye. Johnson.
No.
Johnson, no. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Kozidis. Kozidis, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. 11 ayes and 1 no, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alvin, before you proceed, I missed a question by Alderman Johnson. Do you have a question?
Yes, it was to Alderman Bellato, just to, he was talking about the decorations and things going down Western to Old, 119th to Old Western, and I just wanted to see if he could include all the way down Western to 139th as well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So basically, more of the services?
Yes, sir. All of Old Western, I mean Western.
No, no problem. So then finally, so as Alderman Bellato was saying, there's multiple steps with this, the recreational cannabis. One of them is the local sales tax that the, the community is going to impose, and the reason we're bringing it up now is it has to be imposed by October 1st, because if not, we won't be able to collect until next September, is that, is that correct?
Exactly, it needs to be certified. There is some, the way the law is written right now, nobody can collect until September, but if there is a change to the law that will allow those dates to sync up, if you pass your ordinance and send it to the state for certification by October 1st, you can then collect in January.
Thank you. So, and then what the, what the law allows is this, the local sales tax to be set in increments of a quarter, so 25%, 50%, 75%. So what the Finance Committee agreed on last night was 2.5% as the local sales tax on this, because the city of Chicago set theirs at 3. We thought 2.5% was, was fair, and if we wanted to change it down the road, we always, we always could. So my motion is to approve recreational cannabis tax, the 2.5%. And again, this doesn't put us into anything, because we haven't done the zoning, we haven't done the licensing, we haven't done any of that, it's just another step in the process. If we do allow these things, we'll have the, the tool to collect the sales tax if, if and if it does happen. So, my motion's.
You have a motion, you have a second?
Can I just interject for a second? So you need an ordinance to?
Was the ordinance not included in the packet?
No.
Oh, I thought we included your, your ordinance.
It was not, and it wasn't noticed.
Okay. Because we had the ordinance yesterday.
Did you change it to 2.5%?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think you're going to need a special.
The agenda did have on it recreational cannabis tax. I don't know if the ordinance was actually in the packet, but there's another matter on the agenda that is being removed, and that's under item 10, to approve a settlement agreement. You, you could convene a, a special meeting Monday and still meet the deadline, and we could then bring that before you as well. There would be two items on the agenda then. For some reason, the ordinance did not get into the packet. So rather than adopt it and then have someone challenge it because it wasn't properly presented, if you want to consider doing a special meeting Monday, the 30th, we could do the tax for the marijuana, or the cannabis, and also the settlement if that's finalized. It's up to you folks.
I'm, I'm okay with that if.
Do you need a, a motion, a second, or is it a consensus to do it?
Who can make it Monday?
You could just do, or even schedule a special meeting.
Will we have, will we have a quorum?
Finance the next week, because it's not the first Monday, it's the 30th of Monday.
The 30th of Monday.
Monday, September 30th, so we won't meet until, until the 7th.
Will you have, will you have a quorum?
I will, that's me.
I can make it.
I'll be here.
Do you have a quorum? Do you have a meeting?
All right, we'll talk, we'll talk.
Anything else?
No, that's, I'm sorry, that's, our, so our next Finance Committee meeting is possibly going to be next Monday at 6 o'clock, so we'll be, we'll be here anyways.
All right, thank you very much. The Finance Committee.
There's number four, the next meeting, October 50th. Get ahold of the police, she's at Alderman Slattery. See if she's going to be there, whatever, lights, screens, we have to get moving. There's a lot of things, both the fire chief and the police chief have emailed us that need to get, we need to get them to.
Yeah, I could just say, as a member of the committee, I'd be favored, you take lead on that, that'd be great. Thank you.
You know, I'll get ahold of her and see if she's going to be there, I'll give the agenda put up and then we can get out of there.
Thank you.
All right, and then if you need any help from our, my office to set it up. All right, thank you very much. Municipal Services Committee?
Ah, yes, Your Honor. I've got the minutes for the meeting of September the 10th. Present were Jim Poulstrow, Betty Harmeyer, Ted Ruthenberg, Eric Alvarez, Alderman Meck, Alderman Rita, Alderman Fernwald, and myself. Present as guests were resident Dave Helsley and Treasurer Bellato. Absent were Bob Jackson, Mike Marzal, and Alderman Slattery. The meeting was called to order at 6:05 p.m. Under citizens' concerns, Dave Helsley expressed his concern that the American flag at City Hall was not being flown at half-mast on the appropriate days and times, and that proper flag etiquette was not being followed. He also asked about whether the curbs would be replaced on Francisco when the street was repaved this fall. Under Public Works, Jim Poulstrow presented his report. He also presented a daily work schedule report to illustrate how shorthanded the department is, and to show how difficult it is to complete routine tasks with the limited staff available. I'm sorry, my throat's really rough. There was a discussion on a possible ordinance regarding garbage cans at the curb. It was agreed that garbage cans should not be left out for more than 24 hours, and when brought in by the homeowner, they should not be visible from the street. It was also mentioned by Jim Poulstrow that cans should be placed on the parkway for pickup and not be placed on the street. This is being referred to the Judiciary Committee to have a ordinance drafted. Under the Water Department, Betty Harmeyer gave her monthly report. Under the Recreation Center, Bob Jackson was absent but had sent his reports out to the committee for review. Under the Meadows Golf Course, Ted Ruthenberg gave a season-to-date comparison for 2018 and 2019. The golf course has increased its revenue over 2018 by $17,310.61, bringing the season-to-date total to $718,817.21. Eric Alvarez from Robinson Engineering gave his update on ongoing projects. Mr. Alvarez explained that the repairs for Edison and Francisco were waiting on an estimate cement stabilization, but that the project should start in the fall. He also answered Mr. Helsley's question about curb replacement on Francisco, saying that the curbs that had deteriorated badly would be replaced. There was a motion to adjourn by Alderman Meck, second by Alderman Rita, motion carried, meeting was adjourned at 6:50 p.m. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, October the 8th, at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you very much. Judiciary Committee.
Our next meet, our next meeting will be October 15th at 7:00 p.m. in East Anex.
Thank you. Any automatic announcements or comments?
I have a couple. One, I was really delighted to see the proposal for maintaining public spaces moving forward, I think it's a great thing. And as a, just as a citizen of Blue Island, I would like to express my appreciation to Tom Hawley and Tom Mantle for maintaining the flag triangle, having their landscaper maintain it for some period of time at their own expense, which is kind of, I know I'm embarrassing him, but it's kind of typical of Tom to do things behind the scenes like that. Secondly, there was some comment tonight, and I see on the, we were talking in the agenda for next week, or next Monday, is going to address the Harrell lawsuit, I won't be here at that time. I would like to comment, as some have already noted, that the exposure to the city on this, apparently a million dollars or more for the settlement, something like a million dollars in legal fees, so 2 million plus is going to come out of our taxpayers' pockets. If you read the lawsuit, and I urge everyone to do so, you will probably find yourself